Good afternoon, I'm now going to call the Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to order. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. That is Mass General Law, Chapter Section Thirty-A, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I ask you to stand and join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united in the Constitution of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, good afternoon, I'm going to call this meeting to order, or call the rule Commissioner Stady?
I'm present, sir.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Shavers, present, we have a quorum, no executive session today?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, executive session. Number four, we have minutes of last, well, actually four meetings, number four, meeting, me, meeting, meeting minutes. Director, Commissioner Stady?
I move approval of the open session meeting of April tenth as presented for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor? Aye, it is a vote, next.
I move approval of the revised minutes of the open session meeting of February twenty-one for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
All right.
Aye, it is a vote, number three.
Move approval of the revised minutes of open session meeting March sixth, you might have been asked that, right?
I think it was.
That was the one you were asking for.
Right, yeah, I'll pass it on.
You abstain.
Second, motion made in second, and all in favor? Aye, it is a vote, next.
Next one, you have to do.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the revised minutes of the open session meeting from March twenty, twenty twenty-four for approval.
I abstain.
Okay, thank you, number five is motion made in second, and all in favor? Thank you, I'm sorry.
I abstain.
Aye.
All right.
Number three, number five appointments, we have none. Number six, public comment, each week we have a section on our agenda for public comment, which allows anyone to come in and address the commissioners' law to address us by the remote Zoom. So is there anyone has any comment, Director Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have two staff updates for the commissioners this afternoon. The first will be from Robert Pearson, our R S V P coordinator about an upcoming event. And when Robert's done, Michelle Labadini is going to come in and talk about some employee benefit information that's coming up, so if you don't mind, Robert's here and Michelle will follow.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Robert, good afternoon.
Very happy to see you all, happy spring.
Yes, Robert Pearson, our director of R S V P. Robert, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I am simply here to mention that a week from Friday, we will be holding our volunteer recognition event for two towns, volunteers that serve in in Medfield as well as Walpole. So the date is the twenty-sixth, Friday the twenty-sixth. We're going to be holding the event at the Walpole BFW Hall. It will start at ten o'clock. Some guests will be in at ten in order to, whoops, in order to be recognized, receive some acclamation from the commissioners, as well as receive some beverage certificates, so hope that you can attend.
Of course.
I do too, I'm pretty sure I can attend.
Is that the, I'm sorry, is that the annual event we've had?
No, it is, it's not, this is something else.
Okay, it's not the one we had last year at Delta?
No, no, this is, this is a small scale, we try in the spring, now that COVID's receded, to do a smaller volunteer recognition honoring a founder too. But that next event is going to happen on April, I'm sorry, on August ninth.
Okay, but this is separate, this is a different event?
This is separate.
It's really small, okay.
Any questions?
No, any questions, Robert?
What time does that again?
When on Friday, it's going to start at ten.
Ten o'clock, very good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Okay, Robert, thank you.
Thanks, Robert, thank you.
Still under public comment now, we're going to have Michelle Labadini, our director of human resources, say hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Michelle.
So just a quick update, I just want you to know that we're having the open enrollment events for our benefits fair. So we're having it at the Regi-Team Deans on April twenty-third from eleven a.m. to four p.m. And then we have another one at the agricultural school on May seventh from twelve p.m. to three p.m. The hours are to encompass both shifts at both locations. So we have a lot of vendors attending, so we have Delta Dental, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Boston Mutual Life Insurance, iMed, Marshall Lincoln, the Smart Plan Equitable for the 403B Nationwide, Mayflower, including Medicare information, Norfolk County Retirement, Costco. We have a blood pressure screening, yoga and a chair massage. In addition, we have we have developed a H R wellness page, and in that wellness page, we have all kinds of information on discounts to the employees. So Dell Technologies, Apple Tickets at Work, and with id.me, and that offers a variety of deals and discounts for government employees. So that's all on our website, it's on our wellness page, where we've updated all this information so all the employees can see it. But I just wanted to update the commissioners as well. And those listening, if they can tell their employees, that would be great. Any questions?
That's great. I did have a presentation. Both shifts covered too, that's a great idea.
So this is the open enrollment, basically, and then we've increased the activities.
Every year we've got to bring different vendors in and
Then remember the time you had the luncheon with
Yes, you remember that.
nutritious luncheon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the blender and
Not that I have nutritious lunches, but
Yeah, we had it outside with the umbrellas, yeah, and it rained.
We tried.
But we tried, thank you.
What year was that?
Um, it was when Frank was here, it was Frank's last year, so twenty, twenty-one? Right before John got here. Maybe we can do it again.
All in.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, last call for public comment.
She's leaving out the mic ears.
That's right, she skipped right over that.
She skipped Mike, huh?
That's right.
That was her favorite too, what to tell Mike. He's losing out, okay, number seven, all business, we have none. Number eight, personal matters for consideration, we have several.
Mr. Chairman, if you wish. At the Norfolk Agricultural School, these are all concerning student workers, and they are all notice of resignations, all of them. So I'll make the motion collectively for approval of the notice of resignation for Madeline Germaine of Oxbridge, of Deegan Atkinson of Millis, Samantha Keedy of Boston, Mass, Connor Lane of Branchy, Mass, and Austin Yazbeck of Canton, Mass. These are all student workers, as noted, they're all resignation dates are the same, effective four eleven twenty-four, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Next, President's Golf Course, notice of job title change for Brian Foley of Quincy, Mass, as seasonal golf course associate at the rate stated effective date four eighteen twenty-four, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye. Notice of job title for Megan Straven of Quincy as seasonal golf course associate at the rate stated effective date four eighteen twenty-four, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
And last one, notice of job type, move approval of the notice of job title change for Michael O'Neill at Wayman as seasonal golf course associate at the rate stated and effective date four eighteen twenty-four, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
That concludes that.
Thank you, number nine, payroll expense warrants for Commissioner Stady.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we have two payrolls and several opers. When the warrant lists a four seventeen twenty-four, I move approval of the following, twenty-four dash forty-one, payroll to county, the sum of one hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars, ninety-eight cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Next for the payroll to school, twenty-four dash forty-one, parentheses twenty-one, move approval of the sum three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, thirty-nine cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor? Aye, it is a vote, next.
Next, I move approval for the expenses to county of oh four oh three twenty-four, move the sum of twenty thousand, sixteen dollars, fifty cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor? Aye, it is a vote, next.
The next group are all opera awards, Mr. Chairman, which I'm sure we'll hear about later. First, move approval of warrant twenty-four dash forty-two, opera Rentham, the sum fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and two dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
There are three separate ones here, but they're all the same, twenty-four dash forty-two, opera Franklin, the sum of a hundred thousand dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Another one for Franklin, ditto, twenty-four dash forty-two, opera Franklin, a hundred thousand dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye. And the last one, twenty-four dash forty-two, opera Franklin, the sum once again, a hundred thousand dollars, so moved.
Second.
I have a question. Any one of the three will answer the question, I think, what, what kind of grants or of a hundred thousand, what kind of projects are they being used for?
I'll go through each of them in just a second or
Okay, yeah, sure, I just, I don't want to go too deep, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, they're interesting, I had a question on two, but weekly it comes up.
Second on the last Franklin, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
That would be interesting. That concludes that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, now we'll get to the nitty gritty on American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, report on opera in twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. So the three Franklin awards that we just read, totaling a hundred thousand each, three hundred thousand in the aggregate, are all economic impact style grants. The first one was, and they're all advance payments, not a reimbursement. The first one was for the Franklin Food Pantry, it's an initiative to combat food insecurity impacts of the pandemic. The second one is a Safe Coalition Mental Health and Housing Assistance Grant. And a third one is for the Y M C A Assistance to Franklin Youth. They, they describe that to be, the town has reached out for assistance and requested a hundred thousand dollars from the town of Franklin and Norfolk County to help service the youth population of Franklin who suffered, as noted. Youth in Franklin throughout the country suffered declines in physical fitness, mental health and overall well-being. Y M C A seeks to address these impacts. Representatives came before the Franklin Town Council as part of an open post-public meeting to explain their needs relative to the pandemic requested these much needed funds. There was an opportunity to meet with both elected town council and members of the general public, ask questions. Council unanimously approved this request to assist the Franklin Y M C A. So all three, as I mentioned, are economic impacts, they are highly eligible. And one thing, I just ran to my office because I want to start giving you folks information as it becomes necessary. With these awards today, Franklin, which was originally slated to receive three point four six six total million dollars, will have received two point six million dollars, so they have approximately nine hundred thousand remaining. Actually, hold on one second, just.
Nope, they haven't had much left, huh?
No, they don't, they don't, I'm just reading.
I didn't think so.
No, no, we had Franklin before.
Yeah.
Quite a few, as a matter of fact.
I thought they were chapped out.
With, with these, that's correct, with these awards, they're done, but they have two point six million dollars still in the queue. You've approved three of them right now, so I think they have a very large one right behind this.
Okay.
But with these, you can tell Franklin is approaching the end game.
Okay.
The last award, which you've approved for Rentham.
Wait a second, I'm sorry, so what's the total amount Aunt Franklin ended up getting? Three, three point five million? Or two point six?
Three point four six six.
Three point four, okay, good.
Three four, three point four six six.
Okay, great.
Onto Rentham, you approved a supporting public health category application, it is also an advance for a communication systems generator. This is to purchase and install a generator for emergency communications tower at the Rhodes Drive. This generator is critical in maintaining emergency communication, water department's SCADA systems during power outages. So this is an eligible category. Rentham is currently, with this award, they will have sixty thousand dollars remaining from that two point two six five total allotment, so they are approaching the end of the finish line as well with respect to awards. But as I mentioned, all four today are in that category of advanced, and I wanted to briefly talk to the commissioners about that status. Second. So.
Can I ask a question?
Please go right ahead. As long as it's opera related, sure.
Yeah, it's for opera, so in Franklin, I, I support the request, it sounds totally, I know SAFE is a great organization, Y M C A and the other one, it's interesting, but Food Pantry.
Food pantry is always good.
Yeah, but so this is what's interesting for me, I mean, all of us, this new, these appear to be nonprofit organizations. They aren't really the town Franklin per se, although they kind of have a, probably a relationship with the town. All right, so does this say that we're at the point where other nonprofits could now apply, remember we had some before we talked about? We, that wanted to apply, and we said, wait, the time is not now, it's going to come later? Are we now going to send those nonprofits, now is the time?
Yes and no, when we had the conversation, Commissioner, I believe there was some dialogue about a nonprofit working directly with the county. And in this case, what the county commissioners decided was, we encouraged any nonprofits to work directly with their local communities.
Okay.
We didn't want to, you know, perhaps be dealing with or awarding funds to a local profit that may be in conflict with other priorities that are in play in a community that we wouldn't otherwise know about. So we, we have dissuaded nonprofits from coming to us directly unless they had multi-county impact, such as the Alzheimer's Association. But to be clear, many of the awards that you've given, including Milton, I think, and others, have had nonprofit awards attached to them.
Right, well, Canada too, but they worked with the town of Camp.
Yep, that's right.
I bet I'm a little special one, but I, I didn't know if we were opening the doors for like other ones that we talked about.
The door has always been open for the locals to work with nonprofits, we encourage that, they know, but, they know better locally how those resources ought to be, you know, subbed out.
Sounds good. That's great.
I'd say most all communities have, the bigger communities have community action, council on aging.
Yeah.
All, all these seem to be coming into play, you were correct, because in the beginning when we were asked questions, I mostly worked Quincy social people, I would direct them to the proper source, whether it be the mayor or the mayor of Branchy, and some of them have come through and some of them haven't. This may be a way of taking care of some of those original requests, I mean, certainly a food pantry should be perfect for this, and I mean, we don't have twenty-eight food pantries, but I'll bet you we have fifteen that are affiliated with the cities and towns.
And the need is growing.
Yeah, no, yeah, Quincy, Quincy Community Action just built a new building in, in Brewers Corner and named it for Paul Conley, a very active guy over the years, and it's a, it's built as a food kitchen and a pantry, and before they were in, in rented space and they had a few vans and, and Dan Quirk has stepped up big time in the vans for them, and, I mean, they got a big operation going now. And I, I go down Culpeper Street all the time, it's near my house, and it's a pleasure to go down there on the way here this, here this morning, and I went that way, and this, 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 they're not lined up, but they're there already because the, the, the building they bought, they was in an industrial zone and it was an oil burner company and they paved it all, so now the people are can almost go inside and have their coffee and everything while they're waiting, but the vans are there, the people are there, and they, they're, they're open six days a week. And it is a big pantry, and I, I know all of again, the bigger communities have one, but I'm sure some of the smaller ones do too. And Franklin is not a small community anymore, but probably a perfect fit. I'm not trying to give our money away, but I was wondering if some of them would commit, and this is probably a good way of doing it. But I am trying to give it away.
Support all the grants, it's great to see Franklin's on top of it.
Yeah, they have been all
Some towns are like that, and others, unfortunately, don't seem to be, and they, they kind of, it's troublesome, you know? But anyway, thank you, thanks for taking that question, thank you.
So in addition to explaining the four grants you just approved, I wanted to give you a brief overview of where we stand. The commissioners have awarded over a hundred and seven million dollars in ARPA to date. Through some analysis earlier this week, I observed that approximately five million has been returned from various communities for re, reward, if that's a word, back to their own allotment. I know Quincy sent back over a million dollars singularly, and they intend to just repurpose that and send it back out under their allotment. So we currently have a hundred and two billion dollars actually expended. Sixty-six point six million, or sixty-five percent, is under the advanced category. And that's the part that gives me a lot of pause, I've mentioned this before, because over the next several weeks, we're going to be contacting these communities, we've already begun with a few, to find out what their plans are to obligate those advanced funds and move them into expended status, as long as they're not obligated, but they are advanced, it remains kind of an open, fluid award, and we want to make sure communities are actually following through with their awards the way they were intended, so the scope of, of the issue is quite ominous. But we'll, that's our, that's our main goal over the next couple of months, is to get into each of these grants, each of these communities, and find out what the plans are, but that's the big picture as of today.
Right, good.
Last call, any other opera related issues today? Do we have any for next week?
Well, we do, there are three or four in the queue, including one for Foxborough, I believe, and one for Wayman.
Wayman?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Should have some business for you shortly.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Number eleven, we took care of under warrants, number twelve, bid openings. Is it one thirty yet? I don't want to hurry the clocks.
It's nine more minutes.
Nine more minutes, okay, we're going to skip by that, we do have some business under bid openings. You have no objection, and we're going to go to thirteen, nine more minutes, Nancy, have a seat there. Okay, we, we have a twelve and a thirteen for Nancy. And number fourteen, the February twenty twenty-four trial balance has arrived. Draw attention to that, it's in your packet. There it is. Norfolk County Cash Balance as of February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Everything is in order here, John?
Joe, Joe D. has communicated with me that he's still tracking a deficiency for F Y twenty-four, his number is over a million dollars. He's in the process of backing out some expenses that were associated with the ARPA that our auditor has given guidance on, so he's, he's working towards that expulsion of funds, it won't clear up the deficiency, he's tracking existing revenue against known deficiencies, excuse me, known expenditures. No, it's, it's not a mystery why his deficiency is large, we have projected expenditures, but he doesn't show the collection of the revenue yet, so that deficiency will close over the next several months. In real terms, our internal analysis shows that our deficiency is much closer to four hundred thousand dollars. It's moving, so we're going to keep tracking it, but this February balance needs just a little bit more work on the federal grant side, but for all intents and purposes, it's reflective of collections and expenses to date on the county side. So your vote today to accept the trial balance is all that is needed.
Are you moving the sum of sixty-three million, ninety-five thousand, two hundred and five dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, any questions of the trial balances?
That includes the opera funds on hand, our receipts, and other kind of revenue, other than here today, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the debt, you said it's about four hundred thousand?
We're tracking a deficiency right now above four hundred thousand. It was a million, but as I mentioned at the advisory board meeting, certain collections over the period of January and February have closed that, it's hard to determine if those collections are one-offs, which we think they are, because they were large registry transactions, rather than a return to normal, if you will, transactional activity. So it's helpful to close the gap a little bit, but we're still in the deficient position.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, one more question.
Sure.
Is that reflect that four hundred thousand number, does that reflect the action by the advisory board on the supplemental fiscal twenty-four? Was there some movement of money to
So what the advisory board did in, and the commissioners did as well in December with its hiring and spending freeze and its, and its assignment of surplus to help close the deficiency, it's positioned the county to be able to assign those dollars when we close in July to close the deficiency. So what you're, what we're tracking is, how big is the problem against what the remedy was that we put in place?
Okay.
So we're in good shape to close, but until we are done and closed, I would recommend the status quo. You never know what's going to happen in the last several months of the fiscal year with revenue collection.
Okay, I got you, I got you. All right.
Pactiously optimistic.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if you want, I'll move approval of the trial balance as of date two twenty-nine twenty-four, move the sum to sixty-three million, ninety-five thousand, two hundred and five dollars, eighty-one cents.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That concludes the fund balance for today, which is of February as of February twenty-ninth.
Right.
One more, and then we'll go to Nancy. Request from the Quincy Firefighters Association for civic rate for President's Golf Course for a tournament. Dear County Commissioners, local Quincy Local Firefighters Association, seven nine two, is hosting its ninth annual firefighter John Austin Memorial Tournament on Monday, June twenty-fourth, at the President's Golf Course. On July eighth, two thousand and thirteen, one of the, one of our brothers, firefighter John Austin died while responding to a call, who survived by his fiancee and the two-year-old son, John. John was hardworking, well-liked, came from a great family, was a proud firefighter and a proud Marine. As way of giving back to the community in John's name, the proceeds for this tournament are used to fund scholarships for graduating senior from a Quincy school and seniors who have family members in the Quincy Fire Department. There are also donations made to local school boards from this fund for school sports. Over the past nine years, we've done available to provide twenty-nine scholarships in John's name totaling thirty thousand in donation to the Quincy High, North Quincy High alumni, the Willie Mark Caddy Marine Corps Detachment, and Quincy Youth Football, and Reefs Across America at the Pine Hill Cemetery. Once again, requesting a governmental rate for this successful event, Paul Moody co-chair of the committee, Thomas Bowes, tournament co-chair, what say you about the Quincy firefighters?
Would you have been, we've done it before?
Yes.
I would say.
All nine years it's been there.
Fantastic, so I would move that we grant to the Quincy Firefighter Association Local seven ninety-two pertaining to their golf tournament for firefighter John G. Austin Memorial Golf Tournament, June twenty-fourth, that we apply the charitable rate, the discount rate for them.
Any questions, motion made in seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You, you informed them they are coming, right? They have obviously already with Dana or Call of Dana, about the day set, okay. Okay, one thirty, we have three items, Nancy, please. Um, we have contract awards, electricity from the city of the county, and we have an item further down the agenda. Why can't I find it?
It's prior to that, Joe.
Probably. I'm sorry.
Twelve.
Boy, I'm, I'm looking right at it and I can't see it.
Turn it over.
Twelve eight one.
Other side.
Other side of your first page.
Other side. Perfect, yeah.
Oh, thank you, I knew I was missing a lot of things. All right. First one, under, under our one thirty bid openings, we have our procurement officer here, Nancy Rockwell. Number one, it's a recommendation to rescind the vote taken by this body on four three twenty-four meeting, rejecting that low bidder on the public address system at Norfolk County Agricultural School. I believe is a letter from Director Martin, if you have any questions, you have to direct them to John Wallace. It is, I guess it was a relook at the awarding of the new P A system vote as a result of an additional meeting. And we have a note here from John, which outlines it all forest. And it's been worked out to our satisfaction, John, to your, to the school's satisfaction now?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll go to the next step? You think Lantel can do the job?
Yes.
Okay, and we've had Lantel as in other, other areas of our city, as, as our county, as you know.
Registry, yes.
And we have the shooter and and security at the registry building, which I think is very prescient. I was here as commissioner. Chairman O'Brien said Commissioner Shea, we're going to handle this. So it was eye-opening for me, to say the least. But that's why I made a comment last week, last time we when we opened this, because I did a bunch of due diligence and everyone, when it comes to cameras and other things, uses Lantel. Obviously not anyone, but it's a bid item, so.
Rachel, Lantel.
There's no other question.
Lantel was the one that we rejected, right?
Correct.
It was based on that we had.
Some communication we had.
What, there was dialogue or legal?
We had a meeting with them.
Okay.
And then the issues.
Flirted.
Flirted.
Reassured.
Then there was some pushback and you have another meeting, right?
So you want us to rescind the vote that we took before?
Based on the second, but we have all the backup.
But you just said they've had issues in the county.
No, they're all good. I I I had good experience.
Okay, sorry.
It was a year-long to get the registry up and running and done. And I work with Register Donald, and they're a Norwood-based company. But afterwards, I found out, the other company, and I say they do them all, they obviously don't, but they do line share of these cameras at every intersection now. Shoot the plate numbers and everything. And it's fascinating, if you could have the occasion to go back. And you'll say, I'm looking for something on Wednesday, June tenth, between midnight and two A M. They'll say, do you want to come down and watch it? I wish we'll get back to you. And they go back and run the tape. And when I learned all this, doing due diligence, long before they bid for this, and before I was commissioner, I knew some of this. But and they're a Norwood-based company.
That's fine.
And it's been worked out. I think if everyone's happy, we should go forward. There's no question about it.
All right.
Meets all the criteria, right, Nancy? And there's a written, you know, second, second note here, signed by John Wallace, talks about the reconsideration.
So where's the letter or note from John Martin or John Wallace? I have that. There's nothing here.
It was with the original package.
Oh, that is. Okay, there's no need for that. That's fine. This is John Wallace?
This is the second letter, as I like to say.
That's John Wallace's here.
Can you write that on there? It's all known from the record? So that's John's card, that's John Wallace.
Which is after the second meeting or after.
There weren't any names. I didn't know what I was reading. I don't know if it's Nancy's or whatever.
You're right, you're right.
Okay.
Start with that.
All right, so John obviously is here. He's comfortable with it. He wants to proceed, right? Yep, all right.
I'll have the documents in next week for signature.
Okay. Okay, now we have to take two motions here. I want to do this right. Canceling our vote of four-three.
Yeah, so I would move, Mr. Chairman, if you want. I'll move that the county commissioners move to rescind the vote taken at the four-three twenty-four meeting regarding the rejecting of the low bidder for the public address system for Norfolk County Agricultural High School.
Okay, motion made and seconded. To rescind the vote taken at the fourth April third, twenty twenty-four meeting, rejecting a low bidder for the public address system at Norfolk County Agricultural School. All in favor? Aye. That's the first motion. Second.
No, if you want.
Recommendation.
We approve, we recommend and the approval of the bid for the public address system for the Norfolk County Agricultural High School, be awarded to the low bidder Lantel Communications of?
Norwood.
Is it Norwood, Mass? As outlined and contained. I'm sorry.
On the John Wallace memo. Okay. Motion made and seconded. Go ahead. To award the public address system bid to the low bidder at the Norfolk County Agricultural School, Lantel Communications of Norwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, one, two, three.
Okay.
We got contract award here?
Yes, this is a three-year contract for electricity for countywide. Will Robinson reached out to one broker and three suppliers, and Constellation offered us the lowest price at point one-one-seven-six-zero per kilowatt. And that's firm for three years, and we're going to realize the savings of just under seven cents per kilowatt and approximately a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars a year savings countywide for you.
Any questions? Did we call more than one vendor?
Yes, Will reached out to three suppliers and then one broker, so four in total.
Is this the same one we used last year?
No, we had I G S last year. We have had Constellation in the past.
I'm going to ask for a one-week continuation of this. I had a question. I had a young vendor that came in to see me recently. And I told him when this came up that I, you know, I would I would put it up to him, but I'm not sure this is exactly the same thing. But in the in the interest of, you know, because it's another whole year, I'd like to hold it only one week and I'll.
You want to hold this?
Okay, we he did reach out to a broker, it was DreamWorks Energy. It was a.
I don't know if it's a broker or a, I don't, I'm not sure how this electric, I know we've done this before.
Yes.
And we buy through these people that recommend, they shop for us. All right, I I if there's no objection, I'd like to wait a week and 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 reach out to these people just because.
Is this, it's just, excuse me, a show. Is this the supplier of the energy?
This is the supplier.
Or the person who goes out and finds?
No, this is the supplier itself. It's the supplier is always less expensive than the broker.
The supplier and who's the deliverer? EverSource?
EverSource and N Grid.
Okay, who's supplier right now?
Our supplier right now is I G S.
Okay, so what is this contract for? To continue with them?
No, it's a it's a new supplier.
Okay.
Constellation.
Okay.
Yep, and we've like, Will reached out to Dream Energy Solutions, Constellation, I G S, and N R G.
What's the rate that they they offer?
One-one-seven-eight-zero.
That's good for a year.
Seven-six-zero. Three years.
Three years. That's not a bad rate. I just went through this.
I'm sure it isn't, but I promised this.
On a personal level, I went through this baloney with a, I tried a different supplier, and it was after four months, I didn't keep track of it, and it went right right up to the roof. So I backed EverSource. It's around one-one-seven, around there. But, you know, but if you want to wait, that's fine.
Only because I made a promise and I feel I I I this this may be something entirely different.
Is that time-sensitive? It might be.
When do the contract terms commence?
December, ended December, January.
I think do it next week. How will we continue the item on the contract?
Just one week. I I've got to reacquaint myself just quickly.
Okay.
And I I looked at this a couple of years ago, and in fact, we appointed was the right people to do it. I mean, I'm on the record, tell them, gentlemen, I'm contacting them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Nancy?
Motion to table second.
Motion to table eight.
The electricity contract.
The contract for electricity for the county.
Contract for electricity for the county.
Contract for electricity for one week. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That doesn't include the Aggie School, correct? We say county, we're talking about the county, exclusively Aggie School, correct?
I don't think that's true, no.
Doesn't count.
It's not, no, no, I don't think your statement is true.
Believe it, it does count.
It does count, Aggie, okay, okay.
She indicated the savings were one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars per year countywide.
Beautiful. Okay, all right.
Okay, electricity. Oh, it's countywide, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a pretty good rate. I actually only painfully learned about supply and deliver of the last couple of weeks. Anyway.
Okay. Sixteen, proclamation declaring education and sharing day in Norfolk County.
Where is that?
In your packet?
Yes.
We have. We have the owner, right? The owner?
I got my big friend got cut off, unfortunately, let me see.
In your packet is a.
Joe, you want me to read it?
Yes, I will ask you to read it.
Can you read that?
Yeah, I can read that.
Do you want to introduce it?
So I'm sorry, it's Peter introduced it. I think we did this last year, but just read through it, it's quick.
Okay, this is item sixteen, proclamation declaring education and sharing day Norfolk County. Whereas the basis for the continuity of the of any society is education. In the great Norfolk County, the education of our youth is a priority. And whereas, in order to achieve its highest goals, education must not only impart knowledge, but also teach the students how to live, forming and strengthening their moral character to make a better life for themselves as individuals, for society as a whole. And whereas, a global spiritual leader, the Rebbe Rabbi Menachem M. Schnerrison of righteous memory stressed that a moral and ethical education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. And whereas, such an education can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness imbued with the awareness that even a single positive act of an individual can change the world and usher in an era of global peace. And whereas, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four will mark one hundred and twenty-two years since the Rebbe's birth. And this year begins the celebrations of the seventy-fifth anniversary of his of his leadership and the Chabad Livovitch movement. Chabad is an acronym of three Hebrew words for wisdom, understanding, and knowledge. The name Levavitch comes from the city which served as the movement's headquarters for over a century, means city of love. Of all the ethical values which inform our civilization, none is more important than love. Love of wisdom, love of fellowship, a fellow fellow man, and love of our Creator. These values rooted in the seven Noahide laws have guided the Shabba Livovitch movement throughout its history and are the essence of education at its best, and we should be certain to pass on this precious precious heritage to all young Americans. And whereas, education and sharing day is observed each year on the Rebbe's birthday in recognition of his outstanding and lasting contributions toward the improvement of education, morality, and acts of charity around the world, a day to pause and reflect on our responsibility to ensure our youth have the foundation necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment through service and good works. And now, therefore, we, commissioners of Norfolk County, do hereby proclaim Friday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, to be education and sharing day in Norfolk County, and call upon everyone to work together to create a better, brighter, and more promising future for all. So move.
I'll second that.
So we now therefore declare Friday, April nineteenth, to be education and sharing day in Norfolk County. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a rule. Thank you. Good work, Peter, reading that.
Thank you, Peter.
Moving right along. Report of the county director, number seventeen.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. A few items to the commissioners. First, I wanted to extend my thanks to our maintenance staff, starting yesterday, well, starting last week in the planning phase, began to assist the trial courts in handling the crowds for both visitors, press, and others with this very large Superior Court trial that's ongoing. Working through the weekend, our staff prepared lots to help visitors know where to park safely, both employees and visitors. The staff worked with motorists and folks, visitors, folks visiting our properties yesterday. Everything went smoothly. Very happy with all of their contributions. I want to thank all. I want to remind any employees who are eligible to file their ethics requirements with the State Ethics Commission. They have until May first, twenty twenty-four. You should have received an email last week from the Ethics Commission reminding you of this obligation. If you have any questions, I encourage you to call our Human Resources Department to determine your eligibility or any questions you might have relative to access to that online. So the our our consultants, Stone Consulting, who does our Gatsby and O P E D valuation statement, have completed the twenty-twenty-three report. I have a conference call with them on May second to close that out. This Gatsby report continues to track all of our fund balances and independent review. It is a necessary component for us to complete our associated audit for twenty-twenty-three, which Markham will begin earnestly in the next month or so, so the timing's very good. Speaking of the twenty-twenty, speaking of our audit with Markham, I have a call with them on Friday to discuss the twenty-twenty-two audit closeout. So as we approach the phase of completing twenty-two, they'll move right into twenty-twenty-three as promised. Yesterday, with the assistance of our chair from the advisory board, Dr. Childs, she was able to get a communication going with the town of Brookline's town administrator, Chaz Carey, as the county continues to work with Brookline to support them in their efforts to close out the remaining bounds of their ARPA award. Currently, as you know, Brookline has one of our larger awards at eleven point one million, and we've awarded five point four million to date. So they have about half left, and we were anxiously trying to get through to them and help them understand our upcoming timeline. Dr. Childs was able to get a response from the town administration, which was helpful in guiding their efforts to to achieve that closeout. It's a very important milestone. We're hoping they fall through and we can help them get to their goal. So thank you very much. And in the last, I just wanted to wish Commissioner Shea a happy birthday tomorrow. The anniversary of his twenty-first birthday. Happy birthday, Joe.
Happy early birthday.
Thank you. I will keep the number a secret, but it's getting way up there. All my life, I've been born on Patriots Weekend that week. And then when I was really a young man in West Quincy, we had a section of West Quincy called Finn Hill, the Finnish neighborhood. It's still there, but it's changed a lot. But in the fifties, the Finns were dominant marathoners all over the world, and they would come and have a whole week of celebration, getting ready for the, they'd have a parade. The Finnish neighborhood consisted of a cooperative supermarket, several Finnish baths, a couple of Finnish alcohol establishments. We had a temperance society, and we had a Finnish church. So it's still called Finn Hill. The church is used by another denomination now, and there's one steam bath left on Copeland Street. You've probably all been by it and don't realize, but. So at a young, at a young age, I I was acquainted with the the Finnish community in Quincy, and the and the marathon, and all stands out, and I wrap it into my birthday week. And I might mention that my youngest daughter Catherine is married to a young man whose family, his mother's side, we all know the McDonald's, they own the common market, and they're West Quincy all their lives. The father's side, my son-in-law's name is Brian Peckin. And right away, when you see the name Peckin, you know they're from Finn Hill, and and he is of his father's. So that's all of the history lesson for today. Do we have one item on one of our employees' mothers?
You're very carefully and definitely skirted your age. That was nicely done. I like that.
What?
You definitely skirted your age. You're very, you told a story.
I had to tell a story to.
But it was a great story.
Got to remind you of my age.
You always have great stories, but that's fine.
Yes, Commissioner Shea, you're right. One of our employee's moms passed away. Ray O'Dea lost his mom this week. Arrangements are this Friday and Saturday. If you need any information, come see me. I'll be happy to share that with you.
Okay, well.
I believe she's being wiped out of Norway.
So let's keep Ray in our prayers, the loss of his mom.
Yeah.
I have nothing else. Does anyone else have anything under emergency topics? Okay, we have a full meeting next week. Hopefully the sun will stay out a little. We've had a long, long bout with rain.
Yeah.
The farmers will be happy.
Yes. The lawn will start to grow. I will move that we adjourn at one fifty?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.